Guys.
Ready?
I'll call the meeting order for January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. We'll start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
We're without Tom tonight. He's on vacay. Warrant bills all signed up?
Signed.
Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Men's of the last meeting?
I asked to table them until next week, please.
Okay, we will table them. Town administrator, weekly update.
Okay, just a few items for you. First is to let you know that we have started the foreclosure process on the two thousand and twenty-one tax liens. There are fourteen properties in the town of Acton that still have outstanding twenty twenty-one taxes on them. Out of the fourteen, I believe ten of them are year-round residents. Thirty-day notices went out today indicating that they had until February twentieth of two thousand twenty-four before the foreclosure process ripens. Next is just an update regarding the primary, which we've talked about a few times. We know that the primary is Tuesday, March fifth. The important part about this notice is to let you know that the state this year is doing what they call a semi-open primary, which means that if you are unenrolled, you're not affiliated with the Republican or the Democratic Party, in the past you had to register in that party and stay in that party for ninety days to participate. This year, they're doing what they call a semi-open primary, which means that if you are unenrolled and only unenrolled, you can walk up and you can declare one of the two parties, you can vote that day, and you do not have to actually enroll in it. If, however, you are enrolled in a party and you want to change and you want it to affect the March primary, you have until Friday, February sixteenth. That's the deadline. So if you're a Democrat and you want to participate in the Republican primary or vice versa, Friday, February sixteenth is a deadline to do that. You cannot do that on Election Day. So we'll be pushing those notices and certainly if anybody wants to double-check their primary, how they're registered, just give me a call at the office.
Jen, does that include Green Independent? Because I know a lot of people think that that's not.
Many people that, yeah, if you checked off the box of Green Independent, that is still a party in Maine. Many people make the mistake of thinking, seeing independent and thinking they're independent, but Green Independent is an actual party. They have not had anybody on the primary ballot for many years now, but they are still a group. So if you're Green Independent, there's no reason to show up on March fifth, because the only thing we're voting on is the primary in Acton. So, good point. Good news, the speed trailer appears to be fixed. The gentleman came down from the state. He was here a whole twenty minutes. He worked with Deputy Samborn, and they were able to get the Bluetooth to connect and for it to light up and make the faces on the sign, and they were able to set a speed. They were not able to physically test it because they have to take it out of the snow when a car needs to go by it, but they got a lot further than they, they weren't even able to connect it. So Deputy Samborn is pretty confident that it's working, and first chance he gets, we will pull it out.
Do they know what, like, the issue was?
No, he said it was, he replaced something on the motherboard, and we didn't get into a lot of details other than that, something.
Does that make faces?
I'm sorry.
I don't make faces.
Well, you can make it make faces.
I can?
Yeah, you can after, if you go in.
Thumbs up to the one.
You get thumbs up. You don't get the sad face.
Sometimes I get a sad face when I go too fast.
Yeah, no, it, well, you could actually get, send, put messages on, you know, like, happy birthday, Ed. I said my birthday.
We're not gonna be able to do that anymore. You see that? You didn't see this passing law that, you know, those billboards, you could only put certain things on it?
Oh, no more messages?
No more messages.
Because it's distracting?
Yeah, state law.
In Maine?
Yeah.
Hmm, that's unfortunate.
Sorry, Ed, I tried to get your happy birthday on there, but it is Ed's birthday, if you have a minute to wish him a happy birthday.
Thank you.
We thank him for coming. And the last item, I know this came up, Ms. Leslie asked last week, social service deadline was last Friday. We got probably ten out of the fourteen. We did make an executive decision to call the other four. Some got lost in email, some had personnel changes, but they all got them in. So we have all of our requests in as of about an hour ago, so we'll get those scanned and sent over to the committee and also make copies for you guys. That's all I have tonight.
Okay. Department head, committee chair updates.
Will Langley, road commissioner. So last week, we had the three storms there back-to-back. Got through Sunday fine, that was no problem. That Wednesday, with the storm, we got two storms on Wednesday with the rain. We had two pieces of road, well, the shoulders washed out. We had one on San Pedro that had washed out. The culvert got plugged, so in the plunge bowl, the water came up, started running down the road, but.
Over there?
Over there on San Pedro, but we got that all fixed and everything Wednesday afternoon. I got the culvert unplugged that day too, so it's been running fine now. We did that Wednesday afternoon, then we went back Friday, finished up, and I had to go to the county road. I had a couple of small spots on the county road, and then we ended up having to go to the Milton Mills Road. The state was there for like a half a day and did like the major ones, but I had two or three people call about their mailboxes getting really washed out, so we fixed those. And there was another section on one of the small hills that washed out real good. And if we got any significant amount of snow, I just, I didn't want nobody to drive in or my guys plow and go out in this. We fixed that. Besides that, had the storm yesterday, got through that fine, everything cleaned up pretty good. I'd have the outlets in the actual sand shed itself changed out. The ones that are in there are just no good. Craig came up and.
The old, old one?
No, the new building.
Oh, the new building?
Yeah, both, both the plugs, yeah. They, I don't know, Craig said they were just, they didn't work no more. They had the red lights on, so we put two brand-new ones in there. Then next week, I'm meeting with my tree guy next week on both sides. They're gonna, he's gonna do like a week's worth of work on each side of town, so we're gonna go, I got some stuff, I'm gonna show him over there on District Two, and then he's gonna come up here. We're gonna look at some stuff up here, so that's what's going on right now, so.
Yeah, in the past, in the past, actually, Will, I guess, what was I, I did have some, oh, while you're up here, I met with a lady, I didn't meet with her, I've been in contact with her on the phone, Mrs. Gill, I think it is. She lives up on.
The lady we met with and called David?
Langley Shores, yeah. Yeah. And so we got kind of quagmire up there, trying to figure out how, you know, we can assist in the culvert process, you know, enlarging the culvert, that road, at the end of the road. So I don't know. She wants to meet with you, me, and whoever, see if we can come up with some solution, see what the town can do to, my suggestion, we're gonna have to enlarge the town culvert.
For sure.
You know, because all the extra water that's being put on it. So, so at some point, we'll have to get together and try to figure that out.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was that?
That's all I got.
Okay.
They don't have a doorbell.
Department chair.
We want a doorbell.
They don't have a doorbell. It wasn't us.
What, yeah, what's that, doorbell?
Must have been someone's phone.
Oh. Okay, I guess we're gonna go down to liaison updates. Tom's not around, so.
Unfortunately, he wanted to go check the door for us. I'm trying to keep his straight face. Sorry.
Ed?
Got any liaisons?
Couple of things. We got two applicants for the position of firefighter, firefighter EMT. We're gonna interview those two. I looked them over tonight. We'll see how that goes. Interview them hopefully next week, as soon as we can. Other item is Lincoln School. We're still trying to get budget information there. We may have to just put some, put a number to, to align and.
Have they met or anything?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, there's still, other than the one time we did meet this fall over there and did a, you know, a survey.
I got the historical society budget, but nothing.
Yeah, no, we looked, you know, I mean, we looked at it, tried to get an idea of what it would cost to do some of the work. Building is in relatively good shape, so, you know, we might just have to put a number in there and work off of that until it's gone and see how we do.
Well, we, well, we talked earlier about the Conservation Committee, about merging.
Possibly combining.
Combining, something like, well, you know, say, say the historic society doesn't really pick up on it, because they haven't in Colorado. You know, this is something we're still interested in doing.
Possibly, I guess. They were, the historical society is interested in it.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of getting some numbers and.
Okay, yep.
Yeah.
As long as they're interested in it. Okay, good.
So, I don't think we need to, we need further.
And the truck is back from the fire department, engine two?
Yeah, I just saw the email on that for the pump, so that's all back fixed and back in operation. So, that's all I have.
Dan?
The school committee met last Thursday. I was in attendance for that. We talked about some various things, one of which is on, under new business, and they also started the budget process. We went over the first three articles, and we'll be, have two more nights of going over. I thought it went really well. It was great that we had the school, the Warren and Finance and me there, and I thought it was pretty efficient, so I'm excited to continue work with that. The Conservation Forest Committee, I did receive the minutes, and I've been communicating with Michael, who's the chair, and they are looking, if they haven't already established the next meeting, is February thirteenth. And then this Saturday will be the Mary Grant meeting, which I will be in attendance for.
And we've gotten a couple of emails, people interested in Mary Grants. We've sent them to Dan, inviting them to the meeting, so maybe we'll add to Dan Krampitz, so you didn't think we're missing it, and maybe they'll, they'll attend and see if it's something they want to join.
Okay, rural, rural community recreation. I don't have any updates, so I'm gonna go to old business, transfer station, budget information.
So last week, and I guess it's gonna get a little off-key, but I, we started to talk about this a little bit at five. I just kind of gave you a heads-up that I was gonna bring it up, but, so, we all know that it was with full intentions that we used the Mark Roy budget system to get through this budget process. That was the intent. We hired him, we brought him on, he consolidated accounts as he saw fit, and we've been moving forward, all department heads, social services, everybody got the combined Mark Roy accounts. Well, those accounts are only good if your software has those accounts set up the way that he has set them up. So now that he is no longer going to be using, or no longer going to be doing our books, until you guys figure out which direction we're going in, we're in a spot where we've taken back over AP in-house, which is fine. We have the, what we call, you hear people say the Mark Roy accounts, and we got into some, some discussion last week with the transfer station and kind of put the department head in a difficult situation, seeing the different Mark Roy accounts, which had combined accounts, and then you have what we call the Trio accounts, which were our original ones that were all lined up. I said to the board, I need you to make a decision about what direction we're going in forward as far as the rest of this budget season, because we can't operate really under Mark Roy accounts if our Trio software has it the original way, all individually lined. It's not feasible to make our Trio account numbers the same as Mark Roy's, because on July first of two thousand twenty-three, we inputted the budget as passed by the voters with all the individual lines. And, for example, so Mark Roy, the hauling line, put together maybe ten different Trio accounts. And it may be a great idea down the road to combine them, but what would need to happen is that in the months of July, August, and September that we were using Trio, every time we paid out of one of those lines, our treasurer would have to do a reverse journal entry out of those individual lines and put it in the new combined Mark Roy. Save you a lot of boring details of the work behind it, but we're gonna have to finish the budget season with Trio, which is going to mean that the department head's budgets are gonna be transferred back over to Trio account numbers. The bottom line's not gonna change, because we know what the budget head is requesting, but we're gonna have to separate them out. That's the only way we have a chance of getting through this at this point. So with that being said, I put this on the agenda because when Robin was up here last week, there were questions about what's combined, what's not, so I just wanted to answer a couple of pieces of clarification. One of the questions you guys asked was the hauling line, what that included, and very quickly, that was the compact or the pine tree waste, equipment repair, hauling, demo hauling, universal waste hauling, punskies, your metal, your paper, your glass, your shingles, et cetera. So everything that was hauling and the chipping was put into that with Roy. What we're gonna do is, once we separate this out to the, to the Warren and Finance, is we're gonna give you updated sheets. They're going to have the same bottom number, but you'll get an updated sheet so you can follow along. The other thing I wanted to point out about the transfer station, once we took a closer look, is that there was a lot of discussion last week about account forty-two, seven, six, eighty, which was that equipment line, that we knew there was ten thousand. We had spent nine thousand eighty-six. Was it supposed to be five? Was it supposed to be ten? After looking into this line, this was actually Article twenty-nine of last year's town meeting, when the voters approved ten thousand dollars for the two containers. Mark Roy put that special article, because it was pertinent to the transfer station, in his budget. So that number this year is actually gonna be zero, because you have already bought those containers and that's done. So that's gonna be taken care of. The other miscellaneous expenditures, everything else lines up, we've marked them out. We apologize to the department heads and to the Warren and Finance for this back and forth, but we are gonna do everything we can to make it as smooth as possible. Once we get through these last couple of budget presentations, you'll get all brand-new sheets from Trio, looking like they originally did. Bottom lines won't change.
Will that be soon?
That will be very soon. We are working diligently on it. I really needed the board's blessing tonight before I could just say that's what we're gonna do. They're nodding, so I'm hoping I have that.
Do we want to make a motion? Do we need to?
Well, the transfer station, I'm sorry, for ninety-nine percent of the budgets, it won't change. Transfer stations is going down, absolutely. Good point.
It would have been really nice if Mark Roy had put in a better description of what that line was.
Yes.
Equipment doesn't say, should have just said, containers or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. In his defense, he did give us a conversion of what it was gonna be. The department heads didn't have enough time to work and figure it out yet, and quite honestly, we didn't think that was something we were gonna be maintaining.
Right.
Or we would have had him change the line, so, I mean, we'll get through it, and this won't take long to convert over. Just need you to bear with us. Any other questions on the transfer station? I asked Robin to come. I've got it all spelled out, but I think it's pretty clear now that we've looked at it. Okay.
Cool. New business, budget presentation, rec.
So as Anna makes her way up, I just want to take a moment to say that we know that we have a rec director, Sam Singleton. She is not able to be here tonight. Anna's a new member of the rec, and she has agreed to come tonight to, to kind of go over this budget. It's her first time doing it. We're gonna try to, we'll get Sam in at an upcoming meeting. She's got basic information to present to you, but for some reason, we're still working out the communication piece that was missed. She didn't use, not she, the rec director didn't use Mark Roy or Trio accounts. So what you have in front of you is what I've marked two thousand twenty-four, their request, and then I've given you two thousand twenty-three, so that you have some way of combining one versus the other to see what kind of increases. So, Ann, we appreciate you being here, and hopefully we won't fire too much at you.
All right, yes, speak on.
Do you want to just kind of go through the sports, maybe highlight the increases, and then see where they're at?
Yeah, so the, the total proposed budget is about eleven point three-nine percent higher than last year, and a lot of the increases are related to equipment needs for the individual sports. So for soccer, there are a couple of goals that need to be sized up for the older teams and, and modified, so that was the largest increase within soccer. We also found that we needed more paint than we had budgeted for in the last year, so that's been increased. And then also more maintenance to keep a flow of new soccer balls coming in and increasing the trophy fees as well, so that we can accommodate the tournament that we have in the fall. Basketball is largely the same, except for tournament fees, so this is the biggest increase based on adding the travel team and being able to enter tournaments that have entry fees for those older teams. Otherwise, the ball fees and ref fees and medals and ceremonies and uniform cleaning is roughly the same.
I thought they stopped doing uniform cleaning.
We still do it, it's a lower cost through a different vendor, I believe. I'd have to check with Sam, but they were a hundred dollars, I think, budgeted in the last year, and it went down to seventy-five, based on, it's just that one-time cleaning at the end of the season before they're given to the kids in the next season.
Oh, so it's not weekly anymore?
Right. There's also, we are thinking of adding in programs for indoor soccer in between when basketball ends and the spring sports begin, and so there were some startup costs and ceremony and goal costs for that indoor soccer. There are also, for tumbling and competition cheer, there are some additional equipment fees for different mats that would need to be added to the repertoire of all the mats that we have for those groups, and then also some questions around uniforms. So we're still figuring out whether we would want to have the option to increase the registration fee and have that account for some of the uniform fees if the girls could, or the kids, athletes participating in it could keep the uniforms at the end of the season, or if it's something that we might want to think about having sponsors for, but that line item is in there just to account for that. Baseball is another one where this is up for discussion, so because we are not part of the Babe Ruth League or Little League, we aren't able to participate with, within games within those areas. So for the older kids, we were debating whether it made sense to offer a scholarship for the players that were interested in playing at a higher level to go to Sanford, instead of doing a program for those older kids here. And then to offset that, we would want to have some skills and drills and still maintain the T-ball and the younger teams, so that we can start to build up the program here and get them ready to go into those more competitive areas that are better suited for that. And so there is a request in there for batting cages, which is something that we know is a nice to have, but would fit in with that objective. And again, we're still working through that, but those, those line items were in there for that reason. And then we would still definitely want to maintain for the younger kids and make sure that we've got skills and drills and other programs for them as well. Swimming lessons is largely the same, so that just offsets the cost for the Y. Tree lighting concessions are basically the same. There was a slight increase in concessions just based on the cost of food and inflation and all that. And then there was the addition of another porta potty, so we definitely feel that when we have other teams and towns coming to participate. So adding one more for the spring and fall season would be great. And then there was also another training item that was not in there last year for training the coaches to be able to ref certain games, so that we have other folks that can stand in if we don't have umpires and refs for any of the parents, coaches that would be interested in taking on that training, and that's another nice-to-have item.
I have a few questions on some of the items that were listed. I know that this is your first year, so I don't expect you to have answers for all of them. On the first one was in regards to the nets. I know that there was in the budget for a net or two last year.
Purchased two last year.
Purchased two, so that you're, you're coming forward and saying you have to, like, size up. My question is, are you, is the committee or the rec director keeping track of one new net to purchase and how long they're supposed to last, just so that I hope I'm not seeing every year new nets?
Yeah, I'm not sure of the exact history around these. I know that there are some of the smaller nets where we have an incorrect size for the netting on them. We were also thinking of storing some nets at the elementary school for tournament, the tournament that we have in the fall, and then the nets that we have for the older kids are not the size that they should be, so when they go to other fields, they're not used to guarding against such a large one.
Okay. You mentioned tournament, the tournament in regards to trophies. I'm not sure if I'm, I may be wrong, but when you, we do the tournament for the soccer, are the teams that come, they're not charged a fee, right, to participate?
They're presently not charged a fee.
So I, I do hesitate on the fact that we're giving out trophies and increasing cost of trophies for everyone who participates, when we're not asking those who are coming to do any sort of fee? I think that's something that would cover cost of trophies, so that's something that I would.
That's something there that, you know, when you do a tournament like that, if you're gonna be giving out to other towns, maybe that's where you can get someone to sponsor the tournament.
Yeah.
You know, to pay for that, instead of having the town of Acton pay their trophies for other towns.
Yeah, we did do that this past year, so there were three sponsors that did cover the cost of that additional fee, and so we included it in case we did not want to reach out for sponsors, but that is something that we could offset.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I have a list, I apologize. In regards to the travel basketball team, I know that we approved that this year because of circumstances of the school. I'm not sure we approved it for future years.
No.
So, so I, I don't know if that's something we'd include in the budget or something that we haven't even voted on, or the committee hasn't even brought forward for us to talk about. And I'm, I'm hoping, based off of my work on the school committee as liaison, where they're talking about kind of getting things figured out over there, that they're probably, hoping there won't be a need for that. So that is also an item that I kind of question a little bit.
There are also tournaments that we are not participating in for the younger grades, and so basketball tournaments in general appear to be pretty expensive, and with the number of teams that we have, we just opted to only do that for the older kids this year. But it is something where, if we wanted to participate, I think that there should be at least some line item. Perhaps it's not the full amount that was requested, and maybe that's another area where we could reach out to the community for sponsorships on those tournaments.
Well, mine was, like, yeah, specific for the travel team, just because that was, I feel like, a special circumstance this year, so that's why, if we'd voted that we were gonna do for five years, I could see why it would be in the budget.
Okay.
But just because it was like a one-year special circumstance, we're doing this, so that the kids had a team. I'm hoping the school have things figured out, that they won't have a need for that, so that's just. And the other one, as you mentioned, talks about, like, again, indoor soccer. Again, I haven't heard anything from the rec committee. I don't know, as liaison, if there's been discussions that's been brought to this board about doing an indoor soccer program. These are just things that I feel like be nice to hear in advance and know that those are being talked about.
Well, we did, we did have conversations that, you know, we were gonna stick with certain sports.
Well, I mean, that may be news to Ann, so I wanted to catch her up on that. So the board has been very clear that they were gonna stick with just the baseball, you know, the four, so that's why they're surprised to see some of them in there, but that's the conversation I think we'll.
Yeah, and I, and like I said, I expect, like I said, this is your first time, which I also just want to say, I appreciate, I know it's, having been on the other side on the rec committee, intimidating to come up here, especially your first time doing a budget first year. I just want to commend you and everyone else on that committee for, you know, volunteering your time to do this for the kids. I mean, it's a lot of work, but it's all for a great cause. But those, those are just some of the concerns that I had, and I hope that, obviously, hopefully you can bring some of them back to the committee and the rec director.
Okay.
But I thank you again for being here today, so you can present this.
Yeah, thank you.
There you guys pulled all the groundkeeping stuff, right?
Yes, that was removed.
Um, it's nineteen forty-five, Miss Lane is budget and grounds. Last page.
There was one larger line item that was removed. I'll have to look back at my.
Yeah, budget grounds, okay.
This is nineteen forty-five. Would you know what that's for? Any idea?
Um, hold on one second. So we removed. Maintenance for field treatment was removed.
Yeah, you got, you got Miss Lane's budget grounds.
In most of the individual sports, whether it be soccer or baseball, there is money for field paint or, or, you know, there's money within the sport for, for maintenance, you know, if you're painting or whatever's happening with that sport, so I guess maybe an explanation of what that nineteen forty-five is for.
Yeah, I know that we had removed, removed some of the maintenance for that one and seating, but I'm not sure, I apologize, but I'm not sure what that remaining amount was for.
Yeah, I mean, it may, may have been put in there, when she was talking about the actual ground maintenance and just didn't, didn't pull it out.
No, this is, this is the update. It's been removed. It's been lowered drastically.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because we had it in there for the field mix and seating before, and that was taken off.
Yeah.
The board has.
Maintenance for field treatment.
The board hasn't given any direction, and they won't until Tom gets back about what kind of increases, but if it's anything from last year, I mean, are they allowed, I think, a nine point nine is the max.
Well, I mean, we're eleven, eleven something right now, right?
Yeah.
And I think when, when I was, being the liaison, I was at the meeting with John Denneken, because what we did is we, you know, we've been having the liaison and the.
Warren and Finance liaison.
Yeah, so, but what we did, we did it at one of their meetings, just to get it done, because it was kind of, get it rolling. And one thing that I did ask to put aside the things that aren't essential, essential, I mean, okay, batting cage, you know, stuff like that, that, you know, if we want to get that down from eleven to six or seven or eight or something like that percent, you know, increase, I would think it'd be to their benefit, so when they go to the finance committee and to us, they separate that, the stuff that, you know, they don't absolutely need, and it's more of a wish than a need, so.
I think some of those.
Especially when you talk about an eleven percent increase, so.
Yeah, some of the training, again, that was a nice to have, and the batting cages, nice to have.
Well, and I understand, it's, you know, we're just, we're just trying to keep the increase to a minimum.
Yes.
Because even like the Sanford offset, I mean, I think that as all of us that have kids that play baseball, I mean, once they got out of a certain grade, we expected to pay Babe Ruth. You know, we expected to pay those fees ourselves, so.
I came up with that idea.
Was putting that in there?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, no, I didn't, not put it in, but I, when we were, we were at a, we were at a meeting, we were trying to figure out baseball.
Right, right.
And.
But they talked about not, not having enough kids to do it.
Well, they don't, but, you know, we, we should at least give them the opportunity.
Right.
And I thought by sending them to Sanford, or even if it's like a tuition to send them to Wakefield, if they have a, a team over there, it don't matter where they go.
But that's like in lieu of the, of the rest of the budget, right? It'd be one or the other, is that what you were saying?
Yeah.
Like, you either budget for baseball or budget outsource it.
Baseball's still, still gonna be budgeted for the younger kids, like she said. It's, the problem they have is the older kids, they don't have enough kids to make a team up, so, you know, but we still have to give them the opportunity to do so. I thought, I, I do think it's a good idea to put forward something to get them to be able to go somewhere else, to give them the opportunity. I don't know what they budget, how much did you?
Three thousand.
Three thousand?
Three thousand, three thousand.
That sounds a little much.
That's what I was thinking. I don't want to, I don't want to, if I'm thinking of how many kids, because they couldn't make a team.
But, you know, at the same time, too, we don't have to pay the full thing, either.
Right, right.
You know, we could pay fifty percent.
How like the swimming, you pay, I think you pay fifty percent, you pay it.
Yeah, forty-five dollars.
Pay towards the swimming.
There's no doubt there could be some fine tuning in. There's no doubt there could be some fine tuning in here. But if you can do as I asked last time, well, she can, I guess, or whoever, just list the things where you think you could make some small...
If you had to give up some things.
A need be. We're not saying there will be any, but I just think it's good just for a conversation.
Okay. How do you want us to make note of that? So when we update it to the template that you wanted, like, how do we want to, do you want to like...
Prioritize your wish list.
Just prior, okay.
So, I mean, everything else is, you know, you need it, right? So, this is stuff that you don't absolutely need.
Even like picnic tables, you might be able to get those donated or someone made. I mean, the library got theirs donated, I mean...
I'll say that the last meeting, the fire chief came in and did their essentials. Then at the bottom, they had all the numbers, but he had it in a separate thing that said kind of wish list. I mean, even stuff like that, you can keep it all, but then maybe put it in a little separate and just say, if we can get this, this would be great, but it's also not. I mean, that was kind of nice, because we knew this was his wish list.
Okay.
Nobody wants to cut anybody's budget proposals, because these are proposals. I think I tried to make that clear last week, these are proposals. They're not actually cutting budgets. And, but when there's an eleven percent, and they say the roads are another nine, ten percent, and the fire departments, it's going to be whatever they are, so it's adding up at the end of the year. So we just want to make sure we can keep every department, you know, on a short leash.
Yeah, makes sense.
Do you want to, want to find it?
Yeah. Leslie, come on up.
Do you want me to go first?
I know, she may have a question for you.
Good evening, Leslie Berlin. We were expecting a new figures, because when John talked about his meeting with...
This is not what you believe is the updated one?
No, this is the same one as we got.
Oh, I just, I emailed them right before the meeting just to make sure it was the most up-to-date, and I thought...
So, because he had talked about that, you know, there was supposed to be a wish list, you know, like the batting cage or whatever.
Okay.
So we were expecting different numbers.
This is a different one than what I had.
It is, it is an updated one. We did not remove the wish list items. I just noted them while I was talking, and I didn't, we didn't have them in a different format, but like Daniel said, we could have kind of like the bare bones budget that we're hoping for, and then the wish list as a separate item, but we kept them all combined. So we did take out the grounds fee, and there were some adjustments.
This is lower. What is...
The one you just gave us is the same as the one that we had.
So I might have already had it by then. That's what, I mean, because they sent a budget, David and John met with them, and they made the changes that same night. I'd have to look at the dates, Leslie.
Okay, all right.
But if, I know that the grounds was a lot more than nineteen forty-five originally, so I know this is the updated one.
Yeah.
And there are things like...
Okay.
Maybe we'd already had it in our possession.
All right, so, yeah, like I said, we were anticipating like the wish list stuff was going to be coming off separate. So we were a little surprised when we saw the same thing. I think one thing that would help us also, if we knew the approximate number of participants for each sport.
I like that.
And I had a couple of questions on the concession. There's an amount for a startup, but there is no amount of expected revenue.
Yep, that's definitely missing. I agree.
And there also is a question, is anyone certified in Safe Surf?
Good questions.
Do they need Safe Surf certifications? Because the concessions is very minimal, they don't have any...
I'd have to check with the insurance.
I would check the liability, because it's a town-sponsored event. If someone happened to get sick, the town is liable.
Great questions.
And we have had these conversations, if you recall, when the insurance company about minimizing, and this is a conversation for the select board, and the first time that Ann's hearing it in the public, but we've had these conversations about getting it back to a candy bar and a Gatorade for reasons just like that and not the full service, so we'll double check about the Safe Surf and see if we're...
Yeah, I mean, we never had any issues. I mean, we ran the food thing down there for SSYA and all that. They never had anybody do any of that stuff.
Oh, you didn't have to?
I think it comes to like what equipment you have and what you're actually doing, because I remember when I was on the committee, that was a conversation that we had as women out, we needed to have...
We can check with the insurance provider.
The course in Safe Surf is minimal. It's probably, it's a half-day course. And it's a minimal cost.
That's a case.
That could be a deal breaker, because I can't find anybody working it now.
Anyway.
Great points.
Check.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we now? Zoning articles.
Anybody else?
All right.
Is that it for rec?
Sorry about that. Ann, are you going to be able to forward those, all that stuff to the committee and to Sam?
We may want to get a meeting scheduled, just as a backup, in case we need to look at the numbers.
Thank you.
Lee, did you have something? You look like you wanted to come up. No, okay, sorry.
Hello. I'm here. The chairman couldn't make it tonight. He had some other fire obligations, so I'm just kind of here to go over the minimal things that we have or minor things that we changed. The planning board is looking to move forward, I guess, for zoning articles, change amendments to the Acton zoning ordinance. Which one do we want to start with?
Start with the easy one, on the front.
All right, so the first one is, well, I don't have the front one, so which, there we go. All right, so the first one is actually more of housekeeping, but we decided that we would make it an article, because it was a change to the land use chart. So last year, it was voted on by the Acton residents to change the mineral extraction ordinance. And in that ordinance, it actually states that, so on line F, filling grading or other earth-moving activity more than one thousand cubic yards per year is conditional use, is required. In that amendment, it never got changed in the land use. So now we had to backtrack and change it in the land use, which also changed E, because E was up to without, you know, the five hundred to nine hundred ninety-nine. So we're just doing housekeeping and bringing back the land use chart to what the amendment was changed. And so I have the ordinance on me, so if you want me to read that part of the ordinance, it's, it really is just housekeeping. But where we're changing the actual land use chart, we just felt to make it part of a warrant article, so... Any questions? Pretty self-explanatory. The other one is, so this was brought forth by a resident. It is a resident on, I won't say where, but a resident who has lakefront property on one of our bodies of water. His neighbor, neighbor's dog passed, moved on. The neighbor buried the dog, I think like forty, fifty feet next to this person's well. He had concern, he saw him bury the whatever. They didn't remove it. He went to, all over the place, the state, you know, IF&amp;W, trying to get some kind of answers. He ended up getting his well tested, you know, initially, they told him, test your water. So initially, he tested his water, it was fine. About three, four weeks later, he tested his water again, extreme, not extreme, he had high numbers of nitrate, which comes from decomposing animals. He tested a couple of weeks later, it still failed. It was then recommended that he had to go and get a whole new filtration system for his well. The other concern was that if this dog had been euthanized, those leachates go into drinkable water, surrounding water bodies, and all this other stuff. So he came to the planning board, asked the planning board to move forward something in the ordinance, because he couldn't get anybody, originally, he came to my office, and I said, I don't really have anything in my ordinance to do anything about this, yada, yada. He went to the state, went to the health, and nobody would touch it. So he asked the board to kind of put something in the ordinance stating that. Because the state had these guidelines, and this is actually pretty much verbiage from the state, but nobody would enforce it. So he wanted it to be an enforceable thing in the Acton zoning ordinance, so we don't, this doesn't happen to somebody else's well or any water body, or something in that scene. So what it reads is, five point two-one is water quality protection. It's part of our ordinance, and in five, the last section would be five point two-one point five, no person shall bury any animal within a hundred feet of a natural water body within the shoreline and resource protection districts, or within one hundred feet of a source of potable water.
I giggle for one reason, okay? Because I know the situation you're talking about.
Yeah.
But what bothers me when we do zoning, and, you know, they always sneak something in there, through resource protection districts.
So, well, resource protection districts are usually surrounding bodies of water.
Not necessarily. I mean, it's resource protection all over the place. It might have a swamp way out in the corner somewhere, but, I mean, Acton's got resource protection everywhere. So when you do that, you know, that opens up a whole new can of worms. If you say shoreline zoning, or just say a hundred feet off somebody's well, when you start talking resource protection and stuff like that, ah, yeah.
Yep.
It gets a little...
I see where you're going with it. There is, yeah, and, yeah. This was verbiage chosen by the board and...
Although I understand that, but I, you know, but I've seen over the years, other boards do, you know, put certain things like that in there, and it's satisfying to Danny until you read that one thing you've overlooked. Oh, wow, that's ninety percent of the town of Acton.
Is there that much in resource protection?
No, 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 no.
I'm just, I'm over exaggerating, but Acton has a boatload of resource protection.
No, it does, and so resource protection does encompass, you know, a lot of water bodies that are two acres or higher. So, yeah, you could have a very large wetland in the middle of the woods that's a resource protection, that somebody didn't realize it was, and they wouldn't, you know. So I can see where Dave is running with this one.
Walk in.
I guess my question is that, from the administration point, as you know, we run the day-to-day operations of a town, how are you going to enforce this? I mean, there's nothing...
Tell them to dig it up and move it.
But, I mean...
Just like, it would be any other, like any other part of the ordinance, if it's a violation of the ordinance.
There's no consequences, really, for the...
Well, there is. I mean, you fine them. If they don't do it, then you do what you do with somebody who has a junkyard.
So the neighbor can just say that they think the dog, a dog is buried there, and you're going to, I just feel bad, I mean, just trying to figure out how it's going to look.
Last thing I want to do is have to go and tell somebody to dig up their family pet.
Right, right.
You know, because that's, you know, it's not meant for, you know, somebody runs over a chipmunk and buries it, because they, you know, whatever, but it's meant for usually a large domestic animal.
Is there state law very similar to this?
It's not a law, it's guidance. It's, yeah. It's not, because the state, if it was a law, the state would have done something about it. So where he, this individual, he spent a long time trying to email, contact all these people, and he was getting, he was hitting a wall everywhere.
The reason why the state doesn't have a law on it, because between all the farms and everything, and, you know, they'd never be able to regulate it.
Well, I mean, there is stuff for agriculture. This is different. This is for domestic animals. Agriculture, you're not allowed, that is a law. You can't do it, you know, so... And, you know, and it's not to say that, who knows if the nitrates are from the animal or not. I mean, it's a very good possibility, because says they weren't there, and I have the water test, quality tests.
He had a water test before they buried it?
He had it before, he had it tested a few weeks after they buried it. So it takes so much time for that animal to break down, and the leachates to go low enough. He had a dug well, too, so it wasn't like an artesian well or anything like that. So you're getting a lot more, you don't have to go down so deep.
I think before I, I would make a recommendation on this, I want to see at least some verbiage pulled out of it, the resource protection.
Yeah, I'll talk to, I have no problem bringing that to the board. And if you even want to do that, or you just continue the way it is, you can do it.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to vote for it anyways, so don't matter what you do. No, this is the problem we have here. We've done this for a zillion years now, as we vote on zoning, that we can't enforce.
Yeah.
Okay, and there's a zillion dogs and cats and horses and cows in the town of Acton that have been buried. I buried a bunch of them. And, you know, for people that, when their horses and stuff die and stuff like that, you know, that's what we've always done. We don't do it anymore, but they're out there. But, you know, people are going to still bury their, because you know what it costs us? You know what it costs to cremate a dog now? It's huge money.
Three hundred eighty-five dollars.
And a lot of people can't...
Okay, last week.
Well, that's big money to some people, you know, so, so they're going to do that. And then to turn around and have you running around trying to enforce it, it's a complete nightmare. So, I mean, the state, if it was a big deal, which obviously it's not, because we've all had one complaint how many years?
Yeah.
Okay, but if it was a big deal, you would think the state would have some sort of law against it, like they do with the agricultural side of it. So, you know, to me, I look at it like, if somebody buries their animal forty-nine feet or nine hundred and ninety-nine feet to my well or whatever, okay? Now, you're in violation, and we can't go and get to do it, how are we going to make them do that? It's a civil matter, is what it is. Because they're going to prove, they're going to prove, did it contaminate the well, this and that.
And that's what he's doing, that's the route he's taking, this individual's taking right now, because it did cause him to put in, he put a filtration system in.
And that's terrible.
Yeah.
If that was me, and that was my dog, I would have, we would have re-pulled it.
Well, yeah, he approached these people and didn't get any response from them. It was a large, large dog. It was a, of the Bernese doodle size. So, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't something really small. And like I said, and then the other thing is, if it was euthanized, which we don't know, you have, now you have chemicals that are potentially...
You know, that, right there, you know, that's, to euthanize that dog, it takes a veterinarian. And now the veterinarian should be responsible for that.
It did get, it did go to the vets. I just don't know if it was euthanized or not. I don't know, I didn't actually speak with the pet owner, because I didn't want to get involved that far into it.
What I'm saying is, if the veterinarian is using a substance that is harmful to the environment, and they know they're going to take that dog and go home and bury it, they're not cremating it there.
And they do make bags, they make bags that contain all that stuff, but, either way.
No, no, it is what it is. I just...
Yeah, it's a tough one.
Yeah, I definitely see where Dave is coming from, but I also feel bad for that gentleman that had to go and pay to do that.
You feel bad, but, you know, like Dave said, this is the first time that this is, that I've heard of it, and I've only been here for so long, but...
I've never heard of that before, but I just don't, I don't like knee-jerk reactions to one incident. And this is one where, you know, honestly, at the end of the day, we pass an ordinance like this, can we enforce it?
Yeah, no, some of my board members are very cautious and want to protect the water quality. And so this is, they felt that they would put it through and see what happens with the voters want to do with it and all that stuff. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
I, I'm on board with protecting the land.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, I think everybody should be.
Yeah.
So, those are the two articles that I have, so nothing big this year, took a break.
Oh, you're taking it easy on us this year, huh?
Last year was a doozy.
Yeah, okay. Charlie, you got any questions? I know you do.
You'd be shocked if I didn't, right?
You were hopping around over there.
I like that you caught the resource protection district. That is rather broad and encompassing. So, and the question about enforceability, I think there should be some sort of text in here identifying it as a nuisance if this were to take place. So that has to be expanded, in my opinion. The other thing is, I would like to see inserted after the word bury, a comma, then or permit burial, comma. So this would now read, no person shall bury or permit burial of any animal, et cetera.
I see where you're going with that.
There you go.
Because when I buried it, now it's not the homeowner, I'm the guy doing it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because it may be someone other than the landowner, whereas this way, you cover the landowner.
Right, right. Good point.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, Dennis?
I guess my issue that I have with this is, the wording says any animal. It could be a gacko, or it could be a chicken, or...
That chipmunk, we talked about.
That chipmunk, you mentioned, you know, I mean, I just, I agree. And I know it's real cold out, and David and I aren't supposed to agree, but I agree with David that this is really a reach, and I don't see how any of it's going to work. I really don't. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, anybody else got any questions, though? Thank you, Jason.
I don't, I don't have any response.
You're all good. Well, you shouldn't even have been the one presenting in the first place.
Well, no, I thought it was minor anyway, but...
They're at home right now watching us.
Yeah, no, the any animal was, they just didn't want to start listing off every domestic pet animal, so they just made it very broad with that one. That was, that was really their vision with that one, or, you know, because then you start listing every animal that you can...
It's like the enforcement.
Yeah.
I don't know why...
Well, everything in the ordinance is enforceable.
I know. I know, but.
There, I mean, you don't, in a sense, you don't have to say your consequence, this is your consequences. You're gonna get fined a hundred dollars a day, or up to twenty-five hundred dollars. That's right in the ordinance. So anything that's in that ordinance is an enforceable thing, so if this was added, it is enforceable, and I don't have to spell out that, what's gonna happen.
Well, I know, but you know how it is, you know, we have.
No, and I get it. I mean, we all, I strive for compliance in the first place, so.
Front street that we, well, you know, we can't get to do a certain thing. It's enforceable. We just can't get them to do it.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Right, and, and, you know, the last thing I want to do is hit somebody with a violation in the first place.
Yeah.
You know, so you ask them to comply with the ordinance, and that's, you don't, then.
Next thing you know, we got lawyers and everything else involved over a dog buried too close to somebody's well. Okay, uh, thank you. Um, where are we here? Milton Mills School Traffic.
This is you, Dan.
Yeah, so, um, I mentioned during my liaison update that we had some conversations at the school committee. It was brought up again, I guess it had been brought up in April, and I brought it up to the school board in October, in regards to the pickup situation, um, after the school gets out. Those of you who've gone by the school when the kids are being picked up from school, you might notice that there are, there's a long line of traffic along both sides of the road, um, which was a concern for me and some other people about safety concerns. If there's vehicles that aren't paying attention, people visit from outside of town, if there's emergency where a vehicle needs to get in there, it's, the traffic is ridiculous, um, and it doesn't seem to be a safe situation, and then with the weather coming in. It got brought up, because there's still banks and stuff like that, and cars being parked on the bridge, and being kind of a ditch on one side of the road where cars can't really pull over. It, it's just seems to be not the safest of situations with that traffic, and so, um, some of the school board members have brought up, you know, looking into doing something to kind of alleviate that problem, to make it a little bit safer. Um, and one of the, the things they brought up, they asked us, like, you know, what would the process be, being a kind of state road, with the town sometimes plows, like, would that be something they'd have to bring up with the DOT? Is that something the town would have to initiate conversations about looking into? I know I'd brought to them the last time and this time, um, about, you know, use of an engineer to kind of see if there's a, something that could be done to kind of alleviate, to have a place for cars to go, using current land that they might have, or like, you know, they talked about the dirt parking lot, you know, it's something they could do, but it is definitely a concern that they wanted to know, like, kind of what.
Oh, it's a real pain going down there in the morning. You know, we never had this problem till after COVID.
Yeah.
I mean, nobody ever brought their kids to school, and now and then, you know, but never had lines. Chapel is the same thing. I drove through there the other day, and there was a line down the road, and, you know, unfortunately, it's not just, you know, emergency vehicles, but people going to work. You know, you could go a different way around to go to work, because you could be sitting there a while. It's gonna be tough because of that river.
Yeah.
A little stream there, whatever, but, um, you know, maybe, you know, the school ought to come up with some exploratory committee or something there, and try to come up with some, uh. I don't know, an engineer would be great and all that, but man, spend, have an engineer come in and tell them he can't do it anyways, but.
So where's the state road, really, the school would?
Well, the state, the state's gonna tell you whether or not, you know, you could probably contact the, they could contact the, uh, individual up there in Scarborough, uh, the engineer that I dealt with, um. He's a state engineer anyways. He covers this area up in Scarborough, and, you know, they might be able to come down, take a look at, you know, say, hey, this is what our problem is, and they could probably tell you whether or not I can do it or not. But I know one problem you're gonna have, is even if you, if you, even if they wanted a bridge out, they'd have to take my eminent domain, the property, to make the corner because of this line of sight. So it'd be a big over, but you, if you call, if you had those guys come down, they'd be better off, and they'd tell them if they could or not.
Okay. Yeah, it was, it's just.
Start.
Yeah, they just wanted to, you know, like, kind of what the process, what, select board would think, kind of if we needed to get involved or not, so.
Well, you know, yeah, at, at the end of the day, we own, we own this town property, but, um, but I, myself, I think it would be to their benefit to go ahead and kind of explore some ideas, if they're, they're, they're want.
Yeah. With all of the state and.
You know, then after the fact, you know, that'd be something, be in their budget anyways, right? So, I mean, that's my thoughts anyways.
Thank you very much. I'll make sure to bring that back to them.
Okay, uh, we're down to public comment already?
Yeah, I know.
Any public comment? No? Um, well, do I hear a motion?
I move that we adjourn at seven P.M.
Long term.